Good evening and welcome to the public hearing for the Eastline Ad-Hoc Committee for Short-Term Rentals. Will you rise and say the pledge along with me? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Okay. I'm going to read the notice provided for this public hearing as I'm required to do. So notice is hereby given that the Eastline Short-Term Rental Committee will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, January 29, 2024, at Eastline Town Hall, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut, to receive comments concerning short-term rental regulation under consideration. Copies of the committee's list of possible regulation and related documentation are available for review in the Eastline Town Clerk's office and on the town of Eastline's Interested persons are invited to attend and be heard. Date of the 18th of January, 2024, by me and Sam Toro, its co-chairperson. This notice was filed with our town clerk on January 18 of 2024. The notice was posted on the town website under the news section and our committee webpage, and notice was published in the day newspaper on the 19th of January, 2024. So we're set with notices. Okay. Just a couple of things to point out. This is the second public hearing that the committee has held. Our first was in September, at the beginning of our process in 2023, September 25 of 2023. If people have not been able to make that public, did not make that public hearing, or people can't make this public hearing, we, the committee, has consistently allowed public delegations at all of its meetings. And also through the webpage, you will find addresses where you can address emails with your thoughts, opinions, information to either myself or Gary Cacello here, my co-chair. Okay, a couple of ground rules. When you do come to the podium, just be sure to give your name and address for the record. And we are keeping our remarks to three minutes. I think that's what we've been using in the past, and by the look of the size of the crowd, I think that should work out pretty well. And we usually have a little timer going, just so in case you get lost with it, we'll remind you. Another reminder that we will not have dialogue with you in the public hearing. This is your opportunity to speak and let us know your thoughts and provide information. We're happy to listen to what you have to say. What you will say will be part of the record, and we will definitely analyze it and no doubt use it going forward when we make decisions on the issue. So with that, anyone else want to add any other housekeeping thing that you can think of before we start?
Do you need to announce we are having a regular meeting afterwards?
I don't have to, but I will, sure. Thank you, Greg. Following this, there is a regular meeting of the committee when this public hearing ends. We'll take a little break between the hearing and the meeting. Okay, thanks.
We'd like to keep our comments civil. Please don't interrupt people who are speaking. Just be nice neighbors to each other.
Okay, consistent with our theme. All right, with that, so the podium's available, so who'd like to be the first person to come up and speak? Sure, go right ahead. Thank you. Come on up.
My name is Robert Van Cor. I live at 107 South Peachwood Road in Niantic, Giants Neck Heights area. There was an error, I'd like to note in the New London Day article. Giants Neck Beach is a separate district. I am from Giants Neck Heights. The beach has zoning. Giants Neck Heights is underneath the town zoning. We're different. But as far as the short-term regulation, whether by zoning ordinance or by regulation, I think we must establish conditions for short-term rentals. There should be a limitation as to how many individuals should occupy a house. Limitation should be established by how many bedrooms there are in the dwelling. A two-bedroom house should be limited to no more than five guests. There should be limitations to how many vehicles are parked at a short-term rental. No vehicles with commercial marker plates and/or business advertising graphics should be permitted. The existing town parking ordinance should be amended to prohibit on-street parking in residential areas and add the violation of parking by trespass. Many of the beach areas have very small roads with limited visibility. We can't fill them up with cars and trucks and still maintain any adequate safety as far as it comes to response of emergency vehicles. Each short-term rental should be subject to a safety inspection before being rented. This inspection should include working fire smoke detectors, easy access to fire extinguishers of a type and size stipulated by the fire marshal. There should be a posted emergency escape plan, and there should be inspections of plumbing and water and waste disposal before any rentals. As far as the existing noise ordinance that's proposed, the town does have an excellent noise ordinance. I understand that the chief's made some comment about he would rather have it be subjective than the use of a meter. I disagree. You can get a very adequate sound decibel meter through Amazon for less than $20. And you don't need a police officer, a sworn police officer, to go to a house where the source of noise and stand there with the decibel meter and get a reading. That reading could then be reported to the police officer. We wouldn't have to tie up a police officer for an indefinite amount of time. It can't, you know, we can't, I don't think we can stop short-term rentals, but we can definitely regulate them to maintain a level of safety and quiet enjoyment for the people who live in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? A lot of you here, so I imagine, yeah, Rich, come on up.
Good evening. I'm Richard Steele. I live at 23 Rose Lane, Eastlime, 06333. I have two documents that I'd like entered into the record. Because of the limitation on speaking time, I don't really want to go through them. One is an ethics code that deals with conflict of interest. The other is a short-term rental regulation in Connecticut from the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments. In terms of the code of ethics, if there are any participants on the subcommittee that have a vested interest in short-term rentals, I believe they should be recusing themselves from discussions and decisions. For our house, we had had an Airbnb years ago. It was when Matt Walker was chair of the zoning commission, and we had received a letter from Bill Mulholland that our neighbors objected to that. We were hit with the zoning regulations for bed and breakfasts, which now it seems as though for the STRs, we're kind of obliging, you know, negating those regulations. We had many neighbors come and testify against us. We had usually just one family that would come and visit. It was off-street parking in our driveway, and there was no noise or disturbance. One neighborhood member mentioned a covenant of a neighborhood association, which we don't have, but that was still brought up at the zoning commission. And then I wonder, how do you define short-term rentals? Is it something for a day, a week, a month, a year, two years, for folks that are trying to sell their house and the market isn't bearing well for them, and they decide to then rent to a family while they're waiting for the house to sell? Is that a short-term rental? I am sorry for coming late to the party, but we were out of the country in September, and so you may have already defined this. In terms of affordable housing, it's not necessarily always the value of the housing because affordable is still not affordable for most people, as is stipulated by the, I think it's what, 70% of market value? That's still out of the range for most people. But when we have investors buying up multiple properties and taking that stock off the market, I think it makes it even less accessible for folks to get property. I think that this view for the STRs is inconsistent with the way our town had opted out of the ADUs, affordable dwelling units. But we're okay with STRs. So it seems like a rich-poor dichotomy that is going on. And then multiple unit ownership. We had an experience up in Ithaca this summer, that we had gotten a unit from Airbnb, and the owners had so many units, they didn't know which one we were talking about when we called up about leaking from a bathroom upstairs down to the downstairs. So I agree with the gentleman, there really needs to be inspections. There needs to be guarantees of safety and sanitation. And then I read in one of the minutes that somebody had said something about you can do anything when it's your property. Well, you know, if parents are going to host keggers for 16-year-olds after a football game or a soccer game or a dance or something, is that really what you want? And then I'm wondering about taxable income. Is the income generated from these STRs reported to the federal authorities or to the state? And in addition, if we have a permitting-type structure, that would generate more revenue for the town. It would help to pay for the inspections and would help to make sure that all the units are viable units for rental. Going outside of the organization, a lot of members that have VRBOs or Airbnbs, after that first rental, they tell the client, oh, don't worry about going through them, just call me directly. And so then you get even less responsibility for how the property is held. And I will stop there because I think I've hit my three minutes.
Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, if I could make a point, not in response to any of what Rich has talked about here, but I think, and it's unfortunate Rich wasn't able to be there in September, but we did disclose, for example, that Paul has a short-term rental, and there are people on the commission who have short-term rentals. There are people who do not, and so we have a good mix of pro and con on the commission. I just want to make sure everybody understands that. We know who has a short-term rental, who doesn't, and we're well aware of what their status is here on the commission.
Thanks, Greg. It's a point we can discuss at meeting, subsequent meeting to this, to the hearing. Thanks. Next person.
Good evening. My name's Jim Capadice, and I'm at Shore Road in Niantic. First thing I want to say is thank you to each and every one of you. You put a lot of hard work on a very difficult community issue. You've been careful. You've been thorough, and we all need to appreciate all of your efforts. I know there have been comments made on both sides, but I just want you to know that everybody in this room should appreciate all that you have done as volunteers in this community. So thank you. I'm not going to take much of your time. I've given you my concerns, my recommendations up to this particular point. I'm not going to rehash all of that. You have that. But there were a couple of points that I do want to make that may or may not be helpful to you. First of all, my neighbors and my comments are only made in an effort to make Eastlime a better place for all of us, both residents and businesses. That's always been my intent since I moved to this community, and I hope that anything that comes out of your recommendations and ultimately the Board of Selectmen will make this community a better place. The issue of short-term rentals really comes down, in my mind, to priorities. Economics to some people, as it pertains, you know, to tourism, or the social impact and the potential negative effects on residential neighborhoods. The, a lot of this was brought up in the University of Texas paper, which I think you've gotten a copy of at one point or another, and it talks about these issues in detail. So I hope you take the time and take a look at that article. It's quite lengthy, but has some really good information on short-term rentals. What caught my eye, though, was the significant growth of short-term rentals. That fact alone is enough to force every community to consider the issue and the future impacts it may have on neighborhoods if it is not regulated in some manner. You know, I've seen in the past two years the growth firsthand. My family and I have been coming to Eastlime, Niantic, for over 40 years, and we're quite aware that the community has multiple beach communities and people rent their properties on a regular basis, and that is just fine. The rental of homes has never been an issue until the phenomenon of short-term rentals, quite frankly. If left unregulated, the industry will continue to grow and ultimately create long-term negative impacts on residential neighborhoods, and that's really been our community's basic concern, at least I should say my basic concern. Please understand that my family, my wife, and I are not against homeowners renting their properties under the right set of circumstances. We do feel, however, that policymakers need to take the lead in constructing fair and effective regulations or ordinances that arise from businesses in residential areas, residential zones, and assure that short-term rentals are held accountable for the health and safety issues that were mentioned earlier while protecting the interests of all residents. The only way to do this is to give town staff the authority to monitor short-term rentals and take action where necessary as issues arise. Your listing of possible regulations for short-term rentals are all good. They're all very interesting and, I think, well-made. In particular, the establishment of a registration system, the occupancy, parking limitations, and inspections, which are all similar and required for any operating hotel. Let's put it that way. The discussion of permissible zones should also warrant careful consideration in your final recommendations. Again, I'm not going to take any more of your time. Thank you for the time that you've all devoted to this important and complicated issue. Many communities statewide are dealing with this issue. I hope Eastlime can be viewed as a leader in protecting its neighborhoods and developing a direction that others in other communities will all consider. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Harold Helgeson, 7th High Street in Pine Grove, Niantic. I come here as a homeowner, and I'm also on the board of directors of the PGNA. My one concern, and I won't hold everybody up, excuse me. We have a person who rents his house, who's running a business. He doesn't live in the house. He doesn't show up at the house. He hires people to clean, and I understand he's got quite a few houses. He advertises Pine Grove as a community that has two beaches, a playground, and ample parking. Now, if any of you have ever been in Pine Grove, we have enough parking for our people. My concern is that if someone has an accident that he rents to on our property, who gets sued? Does the Pine Grove Association get sued? If they do, and they don't have enough insurance to cover the suit, the individual homeowners have to pay the balance. I don't think a person should be allowed to use other people to make money. Now, I've never heard of anyone talking about insurance, but there are a couple beach groups. I believe there's eight beach associations. And I think each association has to take a look at the lawsuit problem, because everybody's suing today. So please keep that in mind. Pine Grove doesn't allow businesses, according to our past paperwork. We have a deed that says no business is allowed. We're 150 homes surrounded by water on three sides and the army camp on the other side. If you haven't been there, come in and take a look at us. But I appreciate your time, and thank you very much for your concerns.
Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So if I understand you correctly, sir, sir, I have one quick question. So I think Pine Grove--
You can come back to the podium.
If you would come back.
So just for clarification, yes.
Yeah, I think Pine Grove is unique in that all the land is owned by the church. Is that correct?
No. We own, the church owns common ground.
Okay.
And the Pine Grove committee runs that part, that ground.
I see.
But the properties, according to state law, has to be sold to the individual who owns the house.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay. Next, yes, come right up.
My name is Patty Burns, 42 Shore Road, Oak Grove Beach. Like Jim had said, I wanted to first off say thank you to each and every one of you for all your volunteer time, and I'm sure countless hours that you have spent to better this community for all of us. I have learned so much through your conversations, and I really appreciate all your time and energy that you've put. So thank you for all of us. And I'm going to just speak from my heart. I've been coming here probably over 60 years, and I guess I worry about the tone and the climate of the communities. It's not the same place as I know it, and I will say Oak Grove is my happiest place on this world, and I actually wanted to retire and live here, and now I question whether that is even an option, and that makes me very, very sad. And so from my viewpoint, I worry about the trickle-down effect of it is not the same environment, and I do believe there needs to be definite regulations because it is getting more and more popular, and the whole climate and tone of the town is changing. And so I worry about that down the road because it is my happy place, and I'm going to be so sad if it's not going to be my happy place anymore, and I have to look elsewhere for it. And I want to put on the record that James Capadice is not an owner of 42 Shore Road and never has been. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. You're welcome. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, come right up.
Hi, I'm Lisa McGowan, 33, Spinnaker. I just wanted to talk a little bit about how affordable housing and short-term rental kind of intersects for someone like me and my family. I was in the Coast Guard for eight years. I married my pension when I got out, but I wanted to let you know that all the times that we've moved around, Kevin and I, to find affordable housing and short-term housing sometimes was nearly impossible. So when I lived in Cape May, I think then, now financially it was different, but some of the owners of those Victorian homes in Cape May had figured out it was cheaper and safer for them to list their homes through the whole year, or their apartments and the homes for the entire year, than take that big bite of money for the first three or four months of summer. They were good community partners. We were good community partners. The command would not really subsidize, but if you damaged the home, the command would pay. If you didn't pay your rent, the command took the pay out of your check directly. Cigarette smoking, I guess, was in fashion then. Major beer keg parties were never allowed. The drug marijuana now is legal for us, but it's not legal for federal employees, so that wouldn't be a problem. All those big parties and a lot of the things that somebody who owns a place might worry about, that would be solved if we can maybe take, not solved, helped, if we could take, say, 10% of the units you all might be talking about and give those to Coast Guard families. United States Navy sailors, those blue and gold crew people, I don't know if they still, what the deal is with that, but that would be a really nice way, like Parents Weekend for the parents that came, homecoming, they have the swab summer when the parents all come and the families come. That would be a community partnership that could be explored. I guess I'd be a little willing to try to make some calls. My husband did the past couple of days, and I think he said that there was about one affordable home with two or three bedrooms in our entire town. So maybe you guys could think about that. It's when you're talking about community partners and having productive citizens in your town that will respect the beach and the community property. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, please.
Hi, good evening. Jeffrey Landrigan, 38 Huntington Street, New London, Connecticut. I'm an attorney. I'm here representing the Vafidis family, who are advocates for the continuation of short-term rentals within their community, the town of Eastlime. And while many might feel that you cannot support short-term rentals and also care about preserving the character of the residential neighborhoods, that's not the case for my clients. They own property in the Oak Grove Beach Association, and they want that neighborhood to continue to be the wonderful beach community that it is. I'll try my best to stay within the three minutes. Just wanted to touch on some important parts that we feel need to be addressed. First and foremost, I think it's important to underscore the mischaracterization of short-term rentals as commercial or business enterprises. I know you've, I've been to some of your meetings where your town attorney is here. Obviously, you can ask him for some help, but most of the cases that have occurred nationwide on short-term rentals outside of the Northeast have all determined and held that short-term rentals are not commercial uses, they are residential uses. And what they look at is that they're residents for the tenants who rent them. The focus in the court's analysis has consistently been the use of the property by the tenants, not the lack of residential personal use-- tenants, not the lack of residential personal use by the owners. So, uh, short-term rentals are occasional, flexible uses of a person's residential properties, and, uh, they, they don't really align with the legal definitions that govern commercial uses. Uh, so to label them as commercial is inaccurate with what most of the cases in, uh, the, the United States opine, uh, and my clients think that it's important, uh, to address that, um, in any, uh, report that is, that is sent on. In the event of, uh, that some sort of regulating is gonna be implemented, uh, it's imperative that any safety regulations and oversight that is attempted be uniform across all residential properties. Failure to do so could open up the town to claims of being arbitrary and compresious in your oversight. So just remember that the safety of a residential unit does not differ based upon the length of time that a property may be rented. Targeted restrictions could result in litigation and legal challenges, and I'm sure that's items that the town would like to avoid. In turning to my client's specific area in Oak Grove, uh, in particular, I think one thing that needs to be emphasized is the fact that you've been presented, um, with a lot of evidence, a lot of it through your police chief, um, that, uh, short-term rentals are not at a critical stage within that association or really within the town, uh, as a whole. At your October 23rd meeting, uh, the chief of police testified, and some of the things that he said, uh, during that meeting were that complaints about short-term rentals are not a large driver of calls to the East Lime Police Department. Uh, the chief also said that the department does not care about ownership issues when they get a call about a noise complaint. During your first public hearing in September, I believe you were presented with CAD calls for emergency and police responses, uh, to the various neighborhoods, and most of those calls were not related to, uh, the narrative that short-term rentals are running amok in this town of East Lime. On a related topic of enforcement of complaints at that October 23rd meeting, your chief testified, uh, that the primary complaints related to short-term rentals are related to noise and parking. And he actually testified that you, the town already has in place two vehicles to address noise and parking. Noise, uh, there is a noise ordinance. He, the chief, did say that he wished it had a little more teeth to it. That's probably something that the town should consider as part of any short-term rental oversight. But he also testified that the Board of Police Commissioners for the Town of East Lime oversees on-street parking. So a lot of the complaints about on-street parking problems can easily be addressed, not through some sort of restrictive, um, oversight of short-term rentals, but simply go to your Board of Police Commissioners and ask them to look at a street that maybe is too narrow for on-street parking. They can put up no parking areas, they can address a lot of these concerns. So if you're gonna look at short-term rentals, we would suggest you don't do it in a vacuum, but you also look at these other vehicles that are already in place and make sure that there's some nice symbiotic relationship between your noise ordinances, your parking regulations, uh, and, and really where do you get more bang for the buck as far as short-term rental complaints that are being received about noise and about traffic. Finally, I would add this. Uh, in my day job, I am the Law Director for the City of New London, I'm the Town Attorney for the Town of Stonington, I'm the Town Attorney for the Town of Basra, and I am the Association Attorney for the Pointy Woods Association in Old Line. All of these municipal clients over the last seven to 10 years, uh, have reviewed, considering, uh, consideration for local ordinances addressed to short-term rentals. Uh, City of New London, uh, has not moved forward after researching the issue and seeing how much of an economic driver short-term rental tenants are to a coastal community, how much they support the local businesses, might be something you wanna consider for your coastal community. Stonington had its attempted ordinance last year fail, uh, at a town meeting. The town of ordinances, uh, Town of Basra's ordinance did pass, um, but what's most important to all of the themes that run through all of those municipal, um, considerations are this. They explored it through the town ordinance route, not the zoning regulation amendment route. And, uh, we strongly encourage this commission, if you're going to recommend anything to the Board of Selectmen, you do it the town ordinance route, not the zoning regulation route, and here's why. Number one, if you go the zoning regulation route, you will not have uniformity within your town because you have areas of the town that are autonomous as far as zoning oversight is concerned. So whatever the town adopts for zoning will not apply 100% across the board in the town. That's, uh, gonna open up issues, uh, if you attempt to go in that direction. So the town ordinance, under your police powers, avoids that issue. The second thing that you avoid by going the town ordinance route, not the zoning regulations route, is, uh, property owners claiming pre-existing non-conforming rights for the use of their properties as short-term rentals. Because anyone who can demonstrate that they were doing that as a use before any zoning regulation is adopted theoretically will be grandfathered in for their short-term rental uses. They'll not be able to be subjected to your new zoning regulations, and the town would be precluded from attempting to enforce that zoning regulation against a pre-existing non-conforming property. Because under the zoning statutes for the State of Connecticut, pre-existing non-conforming uses are protected under statute, and your town attorney should be able to confirm those representations. With a town ordinance--
You have to pay.
Oh, no problem, I'm sorry.
You have to pay.
So, in conclusion, my clients urge that the committee reconsider the portrayal of short-term rentals as business enterprises, evaluate safety regulations with equity and reason, to appreciate the unique nature of your community, and to ground your decisions and recommendations with facts, not conjecture. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anyone else like to take the podium? Give us your thoughts? Okay, if not, there's a letter that I would like to read into the record. And this is, um, an email received, um, by way of Greg, um, from, Greg McIntyre, from Steve Larson. This, uh, was directed to my, my email, uh, address, my town email address. And I believe Mr. Larson, um, if I understand correctly, wanted it read into the record, and we have a couple of minutes, so I will do that. Written on Saturday, January 20th, 2024, uh, to the members of the Short-Term Rental Committee. I just watched your meeting of January 16th. I found it most informative, and it is clear that this committee is doing a thorough job reviewing STR issues and information. I would like this email submitted as written testimony at the public hearing. I do not own an STR in East Lime. I do, however, own an STR in Cape May, New Jersey, a popular beach community. Cape May has a, a permitting process for rental properties. It provides for contact information for owner, property manager, after-hours contacts, et cetera. Annual permitting fees vary, uh, fees vary by property size, my fee of $215 for the annual permit. It also requires a fire safety inspection, which requires an additional fee of $110. I support the ideas offered for a permitting process for East Lime. I also support the recommended safety inspections. The amount of fees and fines for non-compliance I defer to the committee to recommend and the Board of Selectmen to determine. I think this should be a town-wide requirement and therefore an ordinance and not a zoning regulation. If there are needs for parking or other requirements that need to be incorporated into zoning for future development, that makes sense. I was required to add two on-street parking spaces when I did major renovations to my Cape May property. In summary, I do not favor a ban on STRs. I do support a permitting process adopted through an ordinance for town-wide application, and do not favor regulating this permitting process through zoning. Thank you for your volunteer service to the town on this important issue, signed by Steve Larson, address, and Sue Graham, 185 Main Street, Niantic. Okay, um, last call, if anyone, uh, wishes to say anything, please step up. Otherwise, I will be, we will be closing the, the public hearing.
It's our probably our last public hearing.
Most likely, our last public hearing.
Step up.
Yes, so Steph, you're here and wish to speak? Otherwise, as we, as I had pointed out to you, um, all of our meetings have a, a public delegation segment, and please do visit our webpage, uh, on the web, on the town website. It has all of our minutes. It also links very well, thank you very much, Brooke, all of our documents, um, which have become part of the record. Um, so, so if there's, uh, an article that we've read, you can read it. So I highly recommend that you, that you take a look at what we've been looking at and feel free to comment further. So with that, I guess I'll entertain a motion to close this public hearing. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Seconded, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.